He got missed. I apologize for that. I'll take the blame for that. Uh, the next item is selecting an investigator for the data breach. That also needs to be under old business. So just to make sure council is following me here, uh, go down to the next item, number three. This is a resolution establishing the precincts in the polling places. That's under new business. That's fine. The next item is a resolution accepting a grant and its property from Lowell Nelson. That remains on the agenda. Uh, the next item is a request to have the deputy clerk position posted. Now that's an item that the council actually voted on at the last meeting. And so under rubber's rule of order, we're really not supposed to bring it back again for discussion. But what we are able to do and are going to do is check and see if the council wants to add it to the agenda or leave it on the agenda. I'm gonna go by the majority. So I believe that Troy made the motion for that. So Troy, do you want to leave that on the agenda?
I would like to leave it on the agenda and I'd like to request that if it gets voted off the agenda, that I still have an opportunity to speak on it.
Uh, well unfortunately, it's not on the agenda. We don't speak to it.
I have public safety issues concerning this agenda item.
Okay, and you can speak during roundtable on it. Okay, so you're a yes. We might get three yeses. So, uh, Mary, you seconded that motion. Are you a yes or are you a no?
I'm negative.
You're a no. Uh, Larry, are you a yes or no?
No.
Okay, I'm also a no. So that means that item is removed from the agenda, but Troy can speak to it during roundtable. Uh, the next item on there is a request to rescind the no religious discussion at City Hall. That was actually voted on at the January 20th council meeting by the council. I was present but not allowed to vote on it. I sat in the audience, so I have no vote on this. I certainly have an opinion on this, but I'm not gonna share that opinion. Um, I believe Troy made the motion on that. Do you want to leave that on or remove that?
I would like to leave it on the agenda for tonight because I would, I would like it to be removed for most of the reasons.
Okay, so you want it on the agenda?
I want this, I want, I want both five and six on the agenda.
I understand.
But, uh, maybe you can give me one out of the two.
Okay, no problem. Those of you either, it's two more people. So, um, down here, I think Larry seconded that motion. Do I leave it on or take it off?
Take it off.
Um, Mary?
Take it off.
I got two take it offs. I've got one leave it on. I have to abstain, so that also comes off the agenda.
Request to speak on that in roundtable as well.
Sure, go right ahead. Okay, and then the next item is gonna be moving forward, which is something that I requested be on the agenda. The next item is the trade-in of the Skidster. And then the last item is a new addition to the agenda. It's called pay the invoice for the fire department. It's for our command truck. We have our medical truck is here. Incredible piece of equipment, so. Uh, that has been added to the agenda as well. Any other additions? If not, do I have a motion?
I have a request to add the, uh, uh, update on commercial lot, actually. That is closing.
Okay.
On April 1st.
Okay.
I think the people should get an update on what's going on.
And do you have information on it?
No, I don't. I was hoping some other council members would.
Nobody has any information on it?
The soil inspection?
Don't have anything on it.
So it's, it's, well, it's gonna go through. We're closing. She'll close on April 1st.
Or could, she could change her mind. I don't know. So I, I have nothing to share. We haven't heard anything. So I don't mind putting it on the agenda, but I don't know.
No, okay.
Okay, so thank you Troy. So do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
No.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Opposed.
That passes three to one. So we're on to our regular meeting now, and I know it's gonna be a tough meeting. I understand that we're supposed to all try to be working together. We're gonna disagree at times. That's okay. The only thing I ask for is let's just try to be respectful to each other. Uh, we're doing the best that we can. Now, the consent agenda is before us. We have several things on there. Uh, Larry, I'm assuming that because Ross is not returned yet, that you're not gonna want to have the minutes on there yet?
Correct.
Okay. All right, um, hopefully that can be on the next meeting. Okay, all right, thank you for that. Okay, so I do have any other changes to the consent agenda for this evening?
I have the, uh,
Yep.
I would like to thank, uh, Mike Criss for his detailed clarification of the fire security system and the, uh, and the batteries that were replaced. And then on the consent agenda, um, I would like to pull up the invoice for KG Design and Library Plan for discussion.
Okay, so you want to add it to discussion?
I would like to add it to discussion.
Got it. Okay, so any other changes? Then if not, for the record, our consent agenda is our staff reports, commission and board reports, our correspondence, the approval of claims and payroll. And note that that, uh, library plan has been added for discussion on the agenda. So do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So?
By Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Okay, so I've been kinda hoping that the midco rep would be here because he said he was going to be here. This has been an item that's been on the agenda, off the agenda. It started back in June. Um, it shifted over to Ross and Steve Heath. I'm not blaming them for this. Uh, I thought it was gonna be taken care of in November. It was not. Uh, I have had Steve in contact with midco. And what midco has told Steve is that, you know, at this time, we don't have a contract, but we're working under the terms of the old contract until the new one gets approved. I'm told that the new contract is actually ready to go, but we don't have anybody here to answer those questions. So what I'm gonna do is skip past it. I'm gonna hope that the midco rep shows up this evening. If they do, great, we'll bring him in, bring him up, and get this taken care of tonight. If not, then, uh, we're gonna have to, uh, push this one last time out to April. And, you know, we're not, we're not gonna be able to push this out any further. April is just far enough, so. Okay, so with that, um, I'm gonna move on to the next item. This is training for our public works.
Thank you.
For our public works employee. This is, uh, Mary, you're the public works liaison or one of them. You wanna speak to this?
This was, uh, on last week's, or last two weeks ago, uh, agenda, and this is Paul's water license. It's $290 and it can be taken while they're training about there. He needs his license.
Okay, is this his first time attending? And now does he have to attend more than once?
That I don't know. I just was informed that this is the start.
Okay, so we'd be sending him out to school. It looks like it's the Earl Brown Center.
Correct.
It's like April 5th to the 7th. Is that a cost of $290? Uh, comments on this Troy?
No comments.
Okay, Larry?
Uh, it's good to have our guys with as much training and license here as possible. It's good for the city, so.
Okay, very good. So I'm gonna call then for a motion to approve the request. It is by our public works superintendent, Mike Criss, to send Paul Stanger to the Earl Brown Center on April 5th through the 7th. It is a cost of $270 and this is for his water license. So motion to approve?
$290.
I'm sorry, $290. So a motion to approve? So, Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to the next item here, which is the, uh, seeking investigator for the data breach. And now keep in mind, this is an alleged data breach. We don't know that anything has happened. We do know that there's a state statute that requires us to go through an investigation.
Are you gonna skip the public forum?
I'm sorry. Um, I'll finish this one and then I'll go to folks. Thank you, Sandra.
You're welcome.
No, I'm not going to skip the public forum. So, uh, the data breach, uh, investigation, at the last meeting moving forward, and we said we were going to go ahead. We need to do this by state statute. Larry had handed out after the council meeting four investigators that he got a list of. I believe it's from the lead of Minnesota cities. Uh, Larry, why don't you go ahead and take this one?
Well, uh, in order to move things forward, we do have to, uh, decide on an investigator to, uh, to, to see exactly what happened. And so I have a list of, uh, four candidates, all very, uh, versed in situations like this. Uh, they all have experience in, um, investigating and dealing with, uh, workplace issues. And so, uh, in reading through the list, and I hope everybody has had a chance to look at it, um, like I said, there's four very good candidates. Uh, the one that I like, um, is, um, got thirty years' experience in, in matters of this nature. And, um, she has, um, uh, extensive, um, experience in, in, uh, commercial litigation, uh, employment investigations, and defense of employment law disputes and investigations. Her name is Joan M. Quaid, and she is a shareholder, um, in, um,
Go ahead, take your time.
Well, her resume is extensive. She is a partner in her law firm. I'll find the name of this event. But what swung me in this is that her, is her experience, um, in this field. And so that would be my recommendation, and anybody else can make the recommendation. They're all equally qualified, but she's got the most experience.
Okay, thank you Larry. Uh, Troy, comments on this?
I do have some comments. I actually have no dog nor pony in this show. But I did notice that in, um, Chad Lemon's letter, he did want us to clarify the status of the mayor as an employee or a public official. Uh, we did not do that. Do we want to take a vote on this? Have we determined if this investigator is gonna report, um, looking at the mayor as an employee or a public official?
You know, I'm not sure how that works Troy. I know that I'd asked that question of our auditors, Abdo, and they said that, uh, all city council members and the mayor, all fire department members are employees. We receive W2s. They actually withhold the social security Medicare from that W2, which means the city contributes toward it. And the other thing that I do know is that if a firefighter or a council member who is working for an employer is laid off and they draw unemployment, the city has to pay toward the unemployment. I don't know if that qualifies for anything or not. Either way, I don't really care. You don't wanna consider me an employee? Doesn't matter to me. If you want me as an employee, I don't care.
Can I continue?
Sure.
Okay. Um, our own Taylor's Falls personnel policy, I read this last month. The personnel that are covered, except as otherwise authorized and specifically provided, this policy applies to all employees of the city except the following: A, all elected officials.
Okay.
In 2003, when, um, this body was considering, um, disciplining a council member, uh, in the meeting, July 17th meeting, uh, council member Steve Gall stated that this council member, um, were, was both a liaison to several departments, but that he or she had continual difficulties reaching this council member to discuss things. He also said that everyone at the table are council members 24/7, and that this council member's rights as a private citizen were gone when he took the oath of office. I still think, uh, Chad Lemon's did want us to make a determination on whether the mayor is an employee or a public official. And I think if this investigator is gonna follow through, they should have that as a guiding principle and know, know what they're going to do. That's gonna base their decision on that.
Okay, and is that something the investigator could determine by looking at the personnel policy and having discussions with, uh, possibly the league and the city attorneys?
Well, that was based on, um, Michelle Solow's investigation. So we're basing all that on Michelle Solow's investigation.
Sure. Do you have a preference, one way or the other?
I think we should vote on it. I think we, I think we should vote on it.
No, it can't because it's not on the agenda, and so because of that, you know, that discussion will have to be held at a later time. Also, we're looking at right now is an investigator for the data breach. So do we have a favorite?
What's my track record looking like for tonight now? Three, three down?
That's your choice. Your choice.
Just pointing it out. I think we should vote on it.
Okay, um, no recommendation on an investigator?
I have no dog or pony in this show.
Got it. Mary?
I, uh, also choose, um, Joan, uh, Sam Quaid, and she does, uh, have the most experience of the four, although all four would be equally as important or responsible to handle, uh, a main core of, uh, your meeting. Um, I just also find that the, the cost with Joan is much less than some of the others. We're gonna get a quality investigator with less money.
Okay, sounds good. So I think we've hit it all. So do, uh, we want a motion here on this to move it forward?
Um, yes, I'd make the motion that we, um, hired Joan M. Quaid as our investigator for the, uh, potential data breach.
Okay, and I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain? The reason for an abstain?
Uh, I, I think I gave that.
Okay, 'cause you wanna make sure that we know the role of the staff and the law. Okay.
And I have no dog or pony in the show.
Got it. Sounds good. Thank you Troy. Okay, so now, and I thank you for Sandra for catching this. We do have, uh, several public forum sheets before us. Uh, we ran a little over the five minutes each time. Um, go ahead Sandra.
I'm curious.
You can sit here, wherever you're most comfortable, and thank you for pointing that out. I was so focused on midco and looking for the person in the audience. Um, Mr. Gall, former mayor?
I would like to remind people that are gonna make a statement tonight that, um, the council has a policy of three to five minutes, and no longer statements to that.
Okay, thank you.
If you can't give it seven to five minutes, you've lost the other.
Thank you Steve. Appreciate that. I'm sure they all do their best. So, go ahead Sandra.
Tonight I'm speaking for a group called Taylor's Falls Concerned Citizens. We're sizable, politically diverse, and growing. We meet once a week to share research and study local issues. We're learning how and why procedures are in place and enacted by local Minnesota governments that we will offer to educate the citizens through our website and town hall meetings. I've been asked to speak on three issues tonight. One, open meeting law. In regards to last week's supposed open meeting law violation, we read the statutes. We reviewed the Minnesota House of Representatives, House Research Development Review of the Open Meeting Law from two, from July 2017, and the footnotes of court opinions we also read. The report states, and this is a quote, "The open meeting law does not apply to chants or social gatherings of a public body. However, a quorum of the public body may not, as a group, discuss, receive information or official business in any setting under the guise of a private social gathering," unquote. "We can find no exceptions, either in the statutes or the court opinions, for government meetings." In Wisconsin, these chants meetings are referred to as incidental meetings. That's something you should know. Data breach. On July 6th of 2022, the very day before, an additional attorney who was representing the city in the case before the State Department of Human Rights sent an email to all council persons and the mayor to hold all data, such as computer, emails, phone calls, any correspondence, et cetera. Someone, this is the day before that came out, someone called CWS Security in St. Croix Falls and asked them to pull all the footage from the City Hall security cameras through January 6th, 2022, and put the video in Ross Rebar's desk. We do not know where the video was placed because as far as I know, Councilman Rebar has no desk at City Hall. No matter who called or who received the video, this is a very likely a breach of data practices. If the city is going to investigate, we suggest strongly that the cans, the council is required to investigate all breaches. The same holds true with the possible breach that I mentioned last, at the last meeting. Investigations. This is a little off-base now, but we further were going to suggest that the city or its insurance carrier spend no more money on private investigators. We would, at the very least, like to see the invoice from the first investigator and also be able to review the report. If an investigation is required, we strongly would suggest that the city engage the sheriff's department. They have investigators. Or simply appeal, appoint, uh, panel of a council person and two trusted citizens to investigate. We ask that this council halt this foolish spending. We're too late. That's it.
Thank you Sandra. Okay, the next one is from Diane Nelson. This is a thank you and a couple of suggestions. We always appreciate those. Microphone is all yours. Nice to see you this evening.
Nice to see you too. Well, I have to modify this a little bit because, um, I wanted to highlight a couple items on tonight's agenda that many of us are very happy to see included, and we wanted to thank the council for adding them to tonight's business. But, uh, one was removed, uh, the request to post and hire for the deputy clerk position. The midco franchise agreement is not moving forward without the rep here. But we also wanted to point out, um, the item entitled "Moving Forward." Um, we look forward to hearing, um, your plans and ideas for a restart. I wonder if I can speak just for a minute about, um, I was going to say that I don't claim to be an expert, but as a former office manager, I have a background in HR and personnel and an understanding of how audits work. In my years of experiencing, uh, experience, auditing firms do not make recommendations to employers regarding their employees' workloads. And I don't believe the investigator hired by the city is qualified to make the claim that our city clerk can get the job done in forty hours either. Um, this is when a time study is warranted. This is when, or possibly the hiring of an outside consultant who specializes in analyzing physician descriptions, job work points, and employee workloads. And this is a good transition to a couple of suggestions I have. But the first one is adding the unfinished business section back to the agenda. I noticed it on previous year's agendas. Not sure why it's been removed.
You mean old business?
Unfinished old business, same thing. It's a standard on meeting agendas.
Yep.
Okay, and it's for accurate record-keeping and accountability. That way, when agenda items, other topics, public questions, et cetera, are removed or tabled for a discussion, they don't get lost or delayed indefinitely, like the midco franchise agreement, um, and the water sewer billing situation. So please consider adding the unfinished business section back to the council agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
Regarding missing water sewer bills, I read that Center City is having meter reading issues too. Their public works supervisor recently attended their council meeting and explained that many water meters have been deemed unreliable either because they're old or the battery for the separate radio head that sends the meter readings to the handheld data collection device has expired. There could be situations where the radio head signal is being dropped or impeded by clutter or foundation blockage, and these require physical site visits. Due to this, they are asking homeowners having meter issues to either submit their readings themselves or schedule a meeting with public works staff to have them read. Is this something the council will consider asking the public works to do in order to get these missing bills or missing readings and bills taken care of?
Absolutely.
I know from conversations, um, with our city clerk that she brought information about missing readings to the attention of the council and public works many months ago. We haven't received a bill since October. Neither has our son, and apparently there are several others or quite a few residents who are missing their bills too. Neighbors around me get theirs. We don't get ours. I think it's time for some serious problem solving, and I'm thanking you in advance for working on resolving this for us.
Thank you Diane. I appreciate your time. Okay, next I have Molly Irish. This is announcement for the city council and the community. Thank you Molly, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, we just wanted to let everybody know there's a community town hall scheduled for Thursday, March 24th at 7:00 PM at the Taylor's Falls Community Center. It is sponsored by the Taylor's Falls Concerned Citizens Group, and all residents of Taylor's Falls and the council members are invited. All the city council members were invited via email on February 26th. Council member Troy Anderson has been the only one to respond and let us know that he's coming to the meeting. The meeting will be posted at City Hall as a special meeting. It is an opportunity for residents to have their voice heard, share their ideas with city leaders on how to move forward in a positive way. Flyers and postcards are going out this week, and then there will also be a virtual option that will be made available to those unable to attend in person. The virtual meeting information will be available on the Taylor's Falls Concerned Citizens website at www.taylorsfalscc.com. And, uh, we also would like to find out if any of you are planning on attending the meeting on the 24th, since we have a message back from you guys.
Thank you Molly. I would assume that if somebody responds back, uh, they're gonna be there. So I haven't decided.
Okay, you guys decided to go?
I don't think I'll be able to attend. Thank you.
Mary?
No, I can't attend.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Rich Smith. Talks about religion in the office.
Yes.
Welcome sir. I think you're a recent resident to Taylor's Falls.
Seven years.
Yeah.
I got the whole friend and then get, anyway, that, uh, and I like to hear a lot. It's a great city. I just wanted to speak very briefly about religion, and I know that that got talked about a few minutes ago and then it kind of, you know, like, and I'm gonna say that I am not a religious person. I was raised Catholic in a strict, checkless, Baptist family and, uh, and, and I respect and have songs about my heart for religion. I really do. And then in fact, it's interesting, um, two of my closest friends, uh, from the Met are deeply religious. And one is,
Can you pull them like?
One is, uh, a member of the Bethlehem Baptist Church, and another one is, uh, is a Catholic. Either way, these are two very dear friends of mine. And, uh, and they, they pray for me continually, and I figure, hey, that's a, I consider that a term of endearment. It's their way of, they love me. We're friends for a long time, and I just look at that way. So my comments about religion, and it, and it's come up here, is that this place, and it's been, it is decided on, it's been made, but here is the place for us to come and talk about what we're talking about tonight. You know, plumbing, electrical, light bulbs, whatever the case may be. And that's what, that's what needs to happen here. And people need to be able to feel comfortable doing that. And that's why I've always advocated for the, that a place like this, which was paid for by all people's taxes, needs to be neutral on some things, and religion is one of them. Now, a person, a religious person can bring their religious values to their meeting. And to me, my, I look at my, uh, my religious friends having, uh, they're just good people and, and they're good citizens, and, 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 and I think, I, I, I enjoy being in a community where there's a Catholic church, and then there's a Baptist church over here. And I, I occasionally attend, um, I call it mass or, uh, whatever the Baptist call. There are gatherings on Sunday morning. I always feel like this is so nice because these people are just here in fellowship, and, and it's wonderful, and some of the things these guys are doing, you know, food chills and all this different stuff. And I'm a musician too, so sometimes I go play, and I have a quite a background in Appalachian gospel music. So I've been to those rip burn things where we're jumping up and down. The only thing that I haven't been to is when they have snakes and stuff like that. That's where I'd rather wanna make do events. But anyway, my point is, is that I have, I just deeply respect religion. I think it's a wonderful part of our community. But I just think there needs to be these neutral spaces and, and, and places where it's, there are, for me personally, I'm not uncomfortable with religion, but there are people that just, that just not, that just makes them feel funky or something. So I'm just glad that we keep a nice safe place here for people to just come and talk about their plumbing problems or something. That's it.
Very good. Thank you sir. Are you having plumbing problems?
No, I'm not. I, I will say about the meter situation. I'm Paul, who I think is a, I've got also a firm on plumbing and heating and everything. And, uh, our, uh, we had to have a new meter put in, and there's a, a box up there with electronic something. Now that's not been put into service yet, from what I understand. Now, he put that meter in six months ago. So I, now that I think about it, I don't think I've seen a water bill. So.
Okay, thank you Rich. We'll check into that.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you again Sandra for catching that. It wasn't intentional for me to skip over it. I'm so concerned about midco not being here. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the next area. This is a resolution, and this is for polling place districting. Uh, what happens is the city governments have to resta, uh, reestablish all precincts after the state has done the districting. That's what's happened. That's what's happened. Steve says here that it could be a routine process of verifying that the existing precinct boundaries meet legal requirements and then recommend those boundaries. That's the case for Taylor's Falls. With the redistricting, nothing changed. So we still have to act on this by resolution. So is everybody comfortable with the resolution? Anybody have any questions on it or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve then Resolution twenty-two oh-three oh-one?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Aye.
By Troy, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You got one. Good job. Okay, yes. I'm on to the next item. This next item is the, it's a Lowell Nelson property. And those of you who've been longtime residents remember Lowell Nelson. He was quite a historical image. I had the pleasure about eighteen and a half years ago of sitting in his living room for about two and a half hours and listening to all the things that Lowell has accomplished in his lifetime. Well-traveled, quite an incredible man. He did say that he wanted to give that property, which is located down by the lift station and the gas station, to the city of Taylor's Falls at some point in time. He never said, "When do you want to give it to the city of Taylor's Falls?" He did say, "Go ahead and mow it, maintain it, take care of it, treat it like your own, treat it like a park, and I'm gonna give it to you sometime. And if I give it to you before I die, great. If I fall over dead, it's in my estate. It will be taken care of in my estate." And so on the agenda here, we do have a resolution accepting this property. We also have a very nice letter from the law firm of, it looks like Meshley and Kramer, and explains the property, parcels, the history of it, how Lowell Nelson obtained it. And for those of you who don't know Lowell Nelson, I think he almost made it to a hundred years old, like a few of our residents. Was he a hundred?
So...
Very close to, yeah.
Long, long, or something.
Just incredible, nice man. So we do have a letter from the representatives for the Lowell Nelson estate. They're saying they're going to give us this property. You know, that's always a good thing. And so I'm gonna start all the way down here to my left. Larry, what are your comments on this, anything?
Well, the letter is pretty clear from their attorneys. But I think it behooves the city to have our own attorneys just investigate the property, you know, make sure there's no leads or anything on it, clear. You know, and...
Like the title search?
Title search, yeah.
Okay. That's a good point. Anything else, Larry?
No.
Okay, so Mary, comments?
That's what I want, was gonna suggest that we put this in the hands of our city attorney to investigate that it's a clear shot, that we don't... We're not obligated for anything other than getting an asset together.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to insult the Lowell Nelson estate by saying, "Well, we're gonna wait on this for a month." My question is, could we approve this contingent?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Upon attorney approval? I mean, any thoughts on that, Troy?
No, I'm just grateful, thank you to the Lowell Nelson family.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody's comfortable with going ahead and approving this? So I'm gonna call for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two oh-three oh-two, which accepts the grant and the device of the property from Lowell Burton Nelson Revocable Trust, pending the review by and approval of our city attorneys. So do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
By Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and I'm moving down the line here.
I skipped those next two.
Skip the next two? Now I'm looking at the, I think we're at moving forward. Okay. Now, this is something that I asked to be put on the agenda. And quite frankly, I don't have a solution. But what I can tell you right now is we might as well need a little bit of conflict resolution. I think to start with the council would probably be a good place. How are we gonna work together as a council and function? That probably needs to expand out into the community. Maybe it's with each of the commissions, eventually the whole community. I'm not an expert. That's not my background. And so that's why I feel like, you know, without spending money, we need to reach out into the community. We need to reach out and find the resources. I eventually Googled and found quite quickly several resources, some that are free, some that cost dollars. And so really, alls I was trying to do tonight was get a little discussion from the council to say, "Yeah, we think it's a good idea to move forward." I have no problem with tabling this until the next meeting and giving council members an opportunity to come back with some suggestions on how we move the city forward. If we use an outside source, if we start with just the council, it'll also put Vice Mayor back in his chair. That puts us at full strength. I think that's necessary because he's been involved through this painful process this entire time. And again, it's not easy. And I know a lot of you out there aren't real fond of me, and you know what? That's okay. I'm okay with that. I'm doing the best that I can. That's what you put me in this chair to do. There's a lot of things the council knows that unfortunately the public does not, and we're not at liberty to share. So with that, your thoughts on this, Mary?
I believe this is a positive step forward, and it's something that's been needed for a year and three months.
What?
Microphone? Sorry.
I think it's a...
Can you pull your mic a little closer, Kim? Thank you, Mary.
I think it's a positive move forward, and it's been needed for the last year. Whether or not we approve, I mean, I don't care if we approve something tonight or if we wait for Ross Raffar to return. But I too would love to see it full strength so that we're all in the, that we're all in this dog and pony show, as Troy says. We'll get this all together. And we'll, each person will be able to determine what their needs are, how we can accomplish those needs, how we can stop the bitterness that's going through. It needs to start at the council first, and then it can go out to the public. But I would like to see Ross involved.
Okay, sounds good, Mary. And for myself, I don't have names this evening. That's why I thought, I'm just bringing it up now to kind of start pushing it forward.
I haven't had time to research.
Okay, thoughts on this, Larry?
Yeah, actually, you know, the give and take that we've been experiencing here in the last couple of months, year or so, I think that's actually really good for the community to be exchanging dialogue like this because we hear from you what you have to say, we hear from you what you have to say, and it makes us a better council. So, you know, the next step forward, I think, is to, you know, realize that we are a community, that we have lots of things to talk about that concern the city. We're all concerned for the welfare of the city and for the betterment of the city. And so to move it forward, if it's a mediator, or a coach, or, you know, town hall meetings, you know, I'm all for that.
Thank you, Larry. Troy, comments on this?
Here's my concern to the county. You just say you're all for town hall meetings.
Um...
This is checking.
Sure. Yeah, 'cause I said I couldn't be at the next one, so... It got me, Troy.
Uh, yes, I'm all for that.
And that's kind of what I'm talking about, you know? This idea of getting along together and realizing that we are one community. And, you know, we're up here to do what's good for the city and to be transparent about it.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning the word transparency as well. I think that is important. I am all in favor of moving forward. I think that's a great idea. I really am concerned right now about the public services being provided to the public. I'm especially concerned about the fire department. I'll talk a little more about that later. I think we need some quality assistance here in the office. I don't think we need our assistance or our assistance in a basement. I don't think we need obstruction. And I definitely don't think we need a conscious and concerted effort to discredit employees. I think we need to move forward to try and help them wherever we can. And I did put in the packet, I do have a listing of the staffing situations in cities and populations that are our size. I encourage you to take a look at it. And my big first step, I think, in moving forward and connecting, really listening to people, giving them the opportunity to speak to me and say whatever they want, and hear from me about the big issues that we're really facing, that is transparency, that's honest government with integrity. And that opportunity will come at the town hall meeting on the twenty-fourth of March, and I will be there.
Thank you, Troy. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna call for a motion to table moving forward until our next council meeting, and further move to have council members bring back recommendations for how we proceed. So do I have a motion to that effect? By Mary, do I have a second? By Larry?
Second.
A sag your lips moment. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And I'm on to the skid steer. And Mary, I think you've got this?
Yep. Every year or two, I don't know, is it three years?
Oh, it's every year.
Okay, every year, we trade in our old skid steer, which is really typically almost brand-new. And we pay fifteen hundred dollars, and we get a brand-new one. And that way, we don't have the cost of purchasing a seventy-five thousand dollar skid steer out of our budgets. And it won't cost us fifteen hundred. We put with the bare boom company right up in St. Edward Falls, and it saves taxpayer money, it saves wear and tear on any of the vehicles that we actually have for skid steers, and it's a plus all the way around. And I would like to recommend.
Good. Thank you, Mary. And I'm the other public works liaison, and I think this is really a good opportunity for us. Each year, it used to be five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
And then they got rid of the one-speed skid steers, went to a two-speed skid steer. And now we have to pay fifteen hundred dollars a year. But what's nice is all the wear and tear and pounding and punishment that that skid steer takes. They bring it back, and they give us a brand-new one. And so we can, you know, pound away on that one. So I recommend this as well. So comments on this, Troy?
Uh, no comments. It sounds like a really good deal.
Thank you, Larry.
It's a no-brainer.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna call for a motion to accept the recommendation from our Public Works Superintendent Michael Priz in regards to trading in the skid steer for fifteen hundred dollars on the buyback program, and that is with bare boom implement. So motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And we are on to the last item, which was added. It's the pay the invoice for the fire department. It's the Palmdale Fab for our command truck. This command truck will replace the full-blown fire trucks that respond to medical responses. That will greatly reduce the cost of fuels, wear and tear on a great big seven-hundred thousand dollar fire truck. And these were actually paid for with dollars that the city was setting aside for retirement in the event that the stock market collapsed and several firefighters volunteered, which happened to us many years ago and put us in a very nasty position. So we started funding in a way to prevent that. We've got, in my opinion, an outstanding fire chief. He convinced the fire department to go to PIRA. And by going to PIRA, it takes the risk of the market off the city's shoulders. We don't have to worry about the downturn of the market. So we took the dollars we had been setting aside at a rate of five thousand dollars a year for multiple years, and we paid cash for this truck. So I think that was a good thing. We didn't have to raise taxes to purchase this truck. And as it said in the report, that's their first brand-new piece of equipment that they've had since two thousand and seven. So Troy?
No, I think you covered most of it, Mary. It is on Facebook at the Taylor's Falls Fire Department Facebook page. I encourage you to check it out. It's beautiful. The other thing I will do is, will, just the efficiency overall, not only the speed, the gas mileage, of course, but the speed at which they can get there instead of taking the bigger trucks out. So I know the fire department is very excited about it, and I think we all think you too, it's beautiful. It looks great now that the detailing is done.
Thank you, Troy. So everybody okay with this? Pay the invoice? So I'll just call for a motion to pay the invoice. It is to Palmdale Fabrication, purchase for our medical rescue truck at a cost of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and it's paid for from our, I think it's that fire fund. I'll have to rely on our treasurer for that and the fire chief. So do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
By Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Troy, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We've hit everything on the agenda, not too bad. Thank you for your patience. I really appreciate that. Troy, I know you want to share information, and I'm still kind of waiting for Midco here. You wanted to share, I know you talked about the city clerk position. What else was it that you wanted to share?
Deputy clerk?
Deputy clerk?
Well, my first point was on the deputy clerk position is that our utility bills need to be paid on time, of course, distributed and paid on time. That's a basic public service that we should all be expecting. Our department and vendor invoices need to be processed and paid on time. I spent most of the day tracking down vendors to find out if, for the fire department, actually, waiting on hold quite a bit, finding out if some of these invoices have been paid, and some of them are a couple months old. Vendors can question contract renewals if our payments aren't made on time. And when it comes to the fire department, that vendor relationship is a public safety issue. There are not enough vendors for the city to be burning bridges with the ones we have. We need to make sure they get paid. This is not about making a liaison, a fire chief, a clerk, or a council look bad. The council doesn't need any help in that area. I'm not, I'm not concerned about anybody's political reasons, legal advice they might be getting, any entanglements from an investigation or anything else. That is, that is no concern really to me. The fire department invoices need to be paid on time. Like I've said before, this is a public safety issue. If someone can be saved, is not saved, or a fire department professional or volunteer is not trained correctly, and if someone is, can be saved, is not saved because our fire department didn't have what it should have, who's responsible for that? I would expect the same is true of the public works and their vendors. The yearly audit needs to be completed on schedule. I would expect the audit requires focus, careful, and detailed attention. It must be accurate. Accurate information needs to be made available. The residents of Taylor's Falls have a right to know about the financial stability of their city. The residents have a right to a timely and accurate audit. The meeting agenda and packets and minutes need to be posted or made available on time. This is a public servant, service. Residents have the right to know what's on the agenda before the meeting. Not minutes or hours before the meeting, but days before the meeting. Council members have the responsibility to review the meeting packet before the meeting. Not minutes or hours before the meeting, but days before the meeting. Forcing council members and the public... Forcing council members and the public to drink from a fire bowl of information just before the meeting begins is not responsible and is not transparent. The clerk treasurer absences need to be, need to have competent coverage. City Hall needs to be open and available to the public. The city's responsibilities to citizens does not stop because the clerk treasurer is sick, on vacation, or at train. The doors still need to be open, and the phones still need to be answered. We need a public servant available and upstairs during office hours. The website should be updated, informative and better to serve residents and tourists. We need to catch up on those other cities with our website. Zoning ordinances, municipal code, and general information should be online for residents. City council agendas and meeting minutes should be posted promptly for residents. Local attractions and events should be visible for tourists and residents on the website. The council needs to demonstrate a concerted effort to serve the public. This is what going forward is all about. Michelle Saldau cautioned the council about coming together or facing the consequences of tearing the city apart. A conscious and concerted effort by members of this council and city staff to discredit an employee is not coming together. A conscious and concerted effort by members of this council to conduct another investigation at taxpayer expense is not going forward. Hiring a deputy clerk is an excellent first step in going forward and coming together as a council and demonstrating our willingness to serve the public. Because that's what public servants do. My next comments are on my request, which was removed, My next comments are on my request, which was removed, to rescind and remove motion and passage of the no religious discussions at City Hall made at the January twentieth City Council meeting. And was it rich? Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And I'm not that far off with with what you're, what you were proposing and suggesting. The city attorney allowed the motion and vote because the issue was on the investigator's report. I do question the attorney's decision to allow this. No motion accompanied to, no action taken, decision. The no religious discussion at City Hall was an action taken. If disciplinary action was taken, isn't the investigator's report open to the public? And as Mr. Levens mentioned, the measure was not on the agenda. The city attorney should not have allowed this motion or this vote to take place. And we should have not proposed it, voted on it, or passed it. I believe the motion passed because the council felt compelled to take some action. The intent of the council was discouraged to discourage derogatory and demeaning comments and behavior. But if the council allows this decision to stand, as they have, the council admits it is attempting to right a wrong or resolve an issue. That means the issue, derogatory and demeaning comments and behavior, did in fact exist at City Hall. But this contradicts Investigator Solvo's findings, that such charges made against the mayor were unsubstantiated. The council will, in effect, and just has, substantiate when Investigator Solvo found unsubstantiated. The whole basis for the data breach charge and hiring another investigator is questionable if the original investigation and investigator's findings aren't dealt, which is what we just did. Derogatory and discriminatory language towards any gender, religion, or individual citizen should not be tolerated in City Hall. Period. Code of Ethics, conflicts and interests should be conscientiously adhered to by the council and city staff. I just wanna point, uh Kevin Schuman did a great job at pointing some of these out and I won't go into them in too much detail, but I would um direct everybody's attention to the conduct of members on the Code of Ethics, which is available to all of you. Specifically to number sixteen, which is a positive work environment, members shall recognize their special role in dealings with city employees to in no way create the perception of inappropriate direction to staff. Number seventeen, implementation. The Taylor's Falls Code of Ethics is intended to be self-enforcing. So why did we pass that? Why did we pass that motion? If this is intended to be self-enforcing. This is all here. It's in the Code of Ethics. We should have been following this a long time ago. Members themselves, this is number eighteen, compliance and enforcement. Members themselves have the primary responsibility to assure that ethical standards are understood and met and that the public can continue to have full confidence in the integrity of government. That last statement, the integrity of government, that's our issue. You know, whether you are on the right or the left, if you don't have a transparent government that has integrity, then all those issues don't matter because you will not be represented correctly. You need to have a transparent government with integrity.
Thank you, Troy. Uh Larry, anything uh you need to?
Couple of things related to the same situation. And there were a couple of citizens who approached me to indicate there was a separation of church and state and tried to school me on the process. I let them know I knew the process. I cannot and will not go backwards and favor religious groups' requests to be permitted on local governments' area because the law protects the First Amendment, but it's established under the condition that the state has no authority to recognize any religion over another. That's why that's in place. On uh twelve, on one twenty-two motion by Larry not to penalize Mayor Mike and to remove any religious discussions from City Hall, I think was a legitimate pressure. Um but I think it was going in the correct way because to return back to the old factor and faction would be um to put the complaint on its head that initially started our, we would turn the complaint on its head if this is allowed to go forward. And this is relative to um the condition that was not to be, Mayor Mike not to be speaking in a religious way. So if you're bringing that back, then that negates what that complaint was all about.
So what was the old-fashioned, what was the old-fashioned? Oh, you referenced the old-fashioned. What was that?
The old-fashioned way that we are not supposed to be talking about a religion at a workplace. That is not old-fashioned, but that is the routine that we went through. When I said that um Chad indicated he would need to have the the piece in two motions that recommended the council have a discussion on the religious conversation at any other meeting than the one on the one-twenty. Um because this meeting was a special meeting for the investigator's finding. However, motion was made by Troy and second by Larry to remove all religious discussions from City Hall. Troy, Larry, and Ross voted yes in high abstain. And I, that can be noticed by Mike not willing to vote yes or no on the tape. I will not revisit this issue again because it's already been up by, by vote in January. And it's not, it's done unless you two wanna bring that back up again. It's done. I don't wanna go backwards. If you wanna talk religion in your own areas, you can talk religion in your own areas. But you don't do them at work because that negates what we are all complaining about and why we are separated so hard.
Can we still say the pledge? Would that?
Uh, excuse me.
Well, just a question.
And and there in lies the problem. So um if you can understand where I'm coming from, I know what the separation between church and state is and it's not relative to the First Amendment. And it is definitely the way that this should be enacted. Thank you. And I also would like to make a call-out, a shout-out to Mike and Paul. Over the weekend, the lift station uh broke down. And before there was sludge and stuff moving all around, they caught it and it was a circuit breaker. And Excel had to come out and do it. And they were still on the spot with the rounding that they do every weekend, that they caught it on the spot, called me and let me know what was happening, kept me informed of what was happening. And uh nothing happened to escape out the door, as he said that it has before. So shout-out to our Public Works people.
Thank you, Mary. And I wanna uh thank everybody in the audience for being so patient. I know it's a tough situation. We'll get through it. Uh we're all gonna have different ideas on how to do it, but, you know, we'll get there. So. With that, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mary, second by Larry. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Was anything accomplished?
Did I, so I'm proving?
No, so if she doesn't show up at the closing of the first thing, she won't get turned on.